I would like to call the regular Board of Education and the board, please rise if you'd like. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kelly, roll call, please.
This is better, but delayed.
Delayed.
Mr. Caseleyau.
President.
Ms. Slint, here. Mr. Rakowski.
Here.
Stafford.
Here.
Thursday.
Here.
Mr. White.
President.
Ms. Stewart.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here. Matt, it's fire.
It's exit sir in the back of the LGI.
I do apologize for my voice, I seem to have a little cold, so I'm not going to try and talk so much, but I think we're going to go to some school presentations and JV Forestal first?
No, it's Dawn Cindello, Director of PPS, is going first.
Go on with the veteran first, huh?
I don't think we should read too much in the order tonight, it's just the order. Just a reminder for these workshops, last board meeting we started, we're continuing this meeting, and then next meeting, we're asking our principals and directors to come in and talk about the goals for their school or department this year, things they're focusing on with the people in their department or school. You know, this summer, we did a lot of staff development and also just a lot of retreat work as a group, and we focused on sort of getting out of our comfort zones as leaders a little bit. And so, just a reminder to the board and the public, all of these folks will be coming back for budget presentations, probably starting in January, going off through March. So, anyway, Dawn, thanks for being first tonight.
Oh, no problem. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to share with you the work that we've been doing so far in the people personnel department. So I put this slide up because I thought it was really important to keep reminding everybody and educating everybody regarding the facets that we are responsible for and the areas that we collaborate with. So again, the top priority right now is our students' families, our special education teachers, the general education, principals, district staff, and our service providers, our PPS service providers. Additional areas that our department oversees is the McKinney Vento, that's our homeless students, our CPSC, which is our preschool students, our out-of-district placements, our collaboration with transportation for the specialized transportation needs of students, Medicaid building and stacks, parentally placed students, parents who are choosing to put their students in a private placement, we have to manage that and organize. Students who are homeschooled by parents, not necessarily they are special ed students, but our department oversees that. Extended school year for our out-of-district as well as our in-district MAPS and ADL programs, and 504 cases. I feel like I might be missing one or two things, but that's the gist of what we oversee. Support for students within our districts, these are the numbers right now that we have regarding the breakdown of students with IEPs and students with 504s. As we see at Beacon High School, we have 192 students that have IEPs and 57 students that have 504s. At middle school, we have 150 students with IEPs and 53 with 504s. At sergeant elementary, we have 51 students with IEPs, 6 with 504s. South Avenue, 53 students with IEPs and 8 with 504s. Glutton with 55 IEPs and 9 with 504s, and JBF with 25 students with IEPs and 8 504 cases. One of the other things that I will be working on and providing that data if needed for the budget is doing a couple years span regarding how, in the past three years, how our 504 cases have increased over the past three years, and then looking at the past three years, the number of CSC cases that we've had from when I first started the position to now, so that we can see if there was any patterns that we're working with. This kind of collided, but our November Professional Development Day, our overview, we had the privilege of being able to work with our whole department throughout the whole day. One of the big initiatives is that we're working and moving towards a multidisciplinary evaluation process, and that means, one, we have an initial referral or an annual review, to have the special education teacher also during some of the academic testing to make it multidisciplinary. In addition, we'll have the student pass speech and language services, occupational services, physical therapy. Those therapists do their evaluations, but we also have the school psychologists doing the academic testing. So to start doing that transition, we're looking at ways in which we can provide our special ed teachers the tools in the administration of the academic assessment. In our budget presentation, I'll talk to you about how does that look like and how do we do that with the supports, but we started doing some of the training right now. Our teachers in our MAPS and ADL classrooms had a chance to work with the assistant director on an assessment that began, so that we have more of a developmental approach of looking at students' needs with baseline data and interpreting the data as a tool and how to program students' needs based upon that information. We found that that was a component that we did not have for the program, and we wanted to have something that was comprehensive, as well as language and interpretation that can be carried over from one program to the next as the students transition throughout the district. Our special education staff in the afternoon. Last year, we started the initiative of working on students writing measurable annual goals for the IEPs. We need to continue that work, and something that we will continue as the next professional development days occur and planning for that, so that we again have common practice and language regarding how we're developing measurable goals on students' IEPs that don't show the gap and that equate to all components of a student's IEP. The other piece that we talked about in last year, I came to the board to talk to you about the student-led IEP practices, where last year, we had 12 student ambassadors from the high school run their own CSC meetings and their annual reviews, which was an outcome that was outstanding. The teachers who volunteered to support the students in that activity, really, there's a lot of work that they put into it, but there was such a great connection that we had students run their actual annual review meetings, and they were able to go up to BOSI's. We were the only district in the school board that run students, and our students were able to talk about and articulate the experience that they had, because the outcome is that we want them to be advocating for their educational opportunities as well as postgraduate to be able to advocate what their needs are so that they can be successful. So we're going to continue that work this year. We actually have a day where we're going to be working with during their lunch periods at the high school 11th grade students on getting them ready and to see who is willing to feel comfortable enough to work on doing that. Also, our teaching assistants is a critical component, and oftentimes, we don't think about or what we've been hearing from them is that they want to be able to provide the supports necessary for the classrooms. They're very dedicated into supporting the classroom instruction and the teachers. So we've been doing some surveys, we did an additional survey after this professional development day, but our social workers did touch upon a trauma-based overview, student traumas in their lives, which the information received and the feedback we received back, we're definitely going to want to expand that conversation. There was a lot of engagement in that topic. Occupational therapists talked about what is sensory, if it's sensory or if it's behavior. Again, the feedback was very positive from the teaching assistants, and that's something we want to expand on a little bit further. We also, the speech therapist talked about classroom strategies to facilitate communication in the classroom, and our CSC chairperson talked about data collection tools to reshape behaviors, especially when we're looking at students who may have FBAs, Functional Behavior Assessments or Behavior Intervention Plans, and we oftentimes need other personnel to help us with the data collection, and we want to start training more staff members on how to do that. Some of the goals of the PPS department is to continue to build the structures and supports to the process and procedures of the department. So I do have and have created Google Docs for team pages, so we have documentation all the special ed department can go to. It's all of our forms and procedures. It's taken the big binder that we created a couple years ago and make it into a Google Doc. Leave in a capacity for special ed teachers to also be able to share information that they feel that their colleagues may be able to benefit from. It's also all the processes and procedures as we're recovering, learning, and cleaning up, we have a document for that as well. So it's a seamless way of being able to communicate and have up-to-date information as much as possible. We're going to continue to facilitate the student-led IEP process, continue to develop the skills and knowledge and annual measurable goals on students' IEPs, and that's going to be an ongoing work with the department, and continue to support building level principals and providing them with the support and developing a capacity of school teams to discuss and plan supports for students prior to a CSC meeting. We want to be able to be available in the buildings to help support the principals and developing more of this team approach before we have to go to a CSC meeting. And that's a picture of last year's student ambassadors and the teachers. That's when we were up at BOSI's to present, and again, I have to tell you, Beacon proud. It was a great moment. They were all able to answer the questions and with fidelity, and the teachers who participated, they did a fabulous job as well. We wouldn't have been able to do that unless we had their support. That is it for my presentation.
Any questions?
This is just a back-to-basics question, but we have lots of new board members, and I just think it would be great to refresh people about what the difference between an IEP and 504 is.
Okay, and I can send over an alphabet soup of special education acronyms, which would probably be very helpful, too. So I'll make sure I generate a list that you can get and so that you guys can understand when we're talking the lingo.
Because McKinney Vento goes into transportation, right, as well?
Right. So it's a lot more than a book. I come allotted for this meeting, but I'd be more than happy to share it, but a quick recap, an IEP is an individualized education plan under IDEA for students with special education needs. It's a viable contract that we have to follow. Follow students with 504 plans are not special education students, but they are students who have medical issues or other accommodations that we need to provide them with the supports in classroom and rebuilding.
Anthony?
Yes, so is there anything more we think could be done to prepare the IEP students for after-high school? I know some of them are inclusion classes, some of them are closed classes. Do we need more to help them prepare for the next step?
We are working on, and one of the responsibilities of the district is the CDOs plan to have the students ready post-secondary, that's general ed and special ed, and that's something that as a district, we're working on and looking at with the high school. But I also feel, starting this endeavor, and we have the students starting at the kindergarten level, and by fifth grade, they are working and sharing some of their information at an annual review meeting in small segments and building upon that. So by the time they're 11th graders, our goal in the next couple of years is having them run their home meetings, so that they are cognizant of what is in their plans, what works for them, what accommodations work for them, what they no longer need, and having them become a voice for what their educational needs are and support. And I feel that if we can continue to do this, that when they become students after, post, or a career-oriented, and they need to know that they can handle directions, but they can't handle multiple directions at once, but they're better if they can only have a shortened version of the directions, be able to have the confidence to go to their employer or the professor to say, "This is how I am as a learner." So these are the things that we want to make sure that we can start instilling at an early age and build up over the years.
Another, my next last question is, it's great to have the students advocate for themselves, I think I commend you in that effort. How do they know, I guess, what the options may be? There are some parents with IEPs that don't even know.
All of our fifth grade students receive letters, the parents receive letters regarding what the next phase is, and we just sent home letters to all of the 11th grade students, to the parents last week, to let them know that we are meeting. At the parent report card conferences, one of the things I've encouraged special ed teachers is just to talk to them quickly about what the process is and how we're having students become more active in the IEP discussions. And we have students attending from fifth grade on to 12th grade at different capacities at the fifth meetings.
Great job, Dawn, thank you.
Thank you.
Crystal?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So before I get started, I just want to say I am proud to be serving as a principal at JV Forestal. We are off to a great start this school year, and I'm happy to be here tonight to share a little bit about my leadership focus for this school year, as well as some of the things that you can expect from me, expect from the school, and look forward to as this school year continues. As it relates to my leadership focus, I really have tuned in to focus on equity, excellence, and communication. So throughout my presentation, I'll make reference to those things and kind of share some examples as to what's going on at JBF. One of the statements that has really shaped my leadership experience as it relates to equity is fair isn't about getting the same thing. Fair is everybody getting what they need in order to be successful. And like every school, we have an equity team. The equity team at JBF is composed of Ms. Gall, who is a second grade teacher, Ms. Sietoli, who's a third grade teacher, and Mrs. Fisher, who's a fifth grade teacher. We attended a training together in September. We've also have met since then and talked about what we want things to look like at JV Forestal as far as our equity team is concerned, and how we'll support our larger staff and student body. The focus that we really decided to really tune in on was how we will continue to reflect on what we do as a district, as well as specifically in our building at JBF. What does it look like in our classroom and learning spaces, and how as individuals can we grow and meet the needs of our students and their families? So from that, we identified a couple of focus actions. So we really want to identify who our underserved students are and the resources that are in place that provide them with a more equitable education. When we talk about brain rules, that's been something we've referenced a lot this year. We know that a hungry brain doesn't learn. And so, our PTSO, as well as our school social worker, has worked very closely to identify who are some of our families in need and how are we stocking our JBF food pantry and working with those families. We recently received a grant in partnership with South Avenue Schools, Common Ground Farm, the Poughkeepsie Journal, and United Way to provide a Thanksgiving meal for over 10 families. Additionally to that, we were able to work with a community partner to get turkey vouchers and make sure that our families eat well for Thanksgiving, and that's something that we really believe in, just how we engage with our families and support them so that we're our students are supported. Another focus action is to continue to have ongoing discussion around the ways we understand and define equity, and what data is out there that we can review that will help us identify what opportunities we can have in place for our students to experience success. Now, this is referenced to our focus on excellence. We know that there are many different focus areas, and throughout this school year, I've already been able to get into the classroom and see how students are engaged in meaningful and authentic learning experiences, and have conversations with teachers to ensure that students are engaged in learning that pushes them to think critically, to be problem solvers, and to engage them in 21st century learning skills. So to support that, I really have challenged teachers to think about our vision and think about how we are setting high expectations for all students. When you come into our school, you'll see on the wall that it says, "We educate the mind and embrace the heart of every child in every classroom every day," but how do we bring that to life, and what does that look like in our classrooms? If it relates to 21st century learning opportunities, we're really excited about our tech and library media specialists, especially with this year having an open maker space, the 3D printer. Kids have had the opportunity to, the fifth graders right now are working on making keychains, and our kindergarten students, because they're recently working on their 3D shapes unit, are going to be using the 3D printer to design different 3D shapes and then use that to talk about it with their class and identify the attributes of those shapes. So they're really getting outside of the classroom and doing a lot of things that support what's going on inside the classroom each and every day. We're working collaboratively as it relates to RTI, which is response to intervention. We also are working within our committees to identify how are we best responding to student needs. So oftentimes, when a concern comes up, whether it relates to student engagement or participation, we're collaborating with one another, pulling in different staff members. Our school social worker has been a great support in getting in to support teachers and identify how the student can be better supported and how we can further engage the teacher and the parents as well in that conversation. Professional growth. We are lifelong learners, and Dawn referenced the November PLC Day, the Professional Learning Day. During that time, I had the opportunity to walk around, but I also had the opportunity to lead a workshop on culturally responsive teaching, and so bringing that back to our building and really discussing what classroom engagement looks like and how we are responsibly serving students and doing more than just kind of like the everyday cultural things, when you think about food or dance or celebration of students and knowing their names and birthdays, but what are the different cultural behaviors and linguistic behaviors that students bring to the classroom and how we support them? Communication, really making sure that it's student-centered. There are a lot of cool things going on right now. We have the JBF Morning News Show, which is student-led and student-focused. They work with our library media specialist, but the fifth graders really take on all aspects of creating, editing, launching, and sharing it out, and really get excited about how that's shared with the larger student body. So it's displayed on our front lobby display, it's a part of the morning meetings in the different classrooms, and that has been one way that the students get to also express their, excuse me, their voice. In regard to my communication with my staff, we have Critical Friends Group, where we meet monthly, get to reflect and talk about what's going on in the classrooms and what they can share to learn from one another. They share best practices, and I also then engage in reflective conversation with them about different protocols that they can use in the classroom, and especially with their colleagues, to, you know, reflect on what's going on and how they can support and grow professionally, but also as it relates to the support that they give to students. PTSO, really engaging our parent body as it relates to communication. We have quarterly meetings set up with the PTSO. In addition to that, the regular scheduled PTSO meetings are attended by representative groups of teachers and parents. The student voice is a big one, because I have really worked hard to have conversations with students. The student council, they are going to be opening up our November 28th kindness assembly, and we focus on how we can celebrate the different acts of kindness and moments of gratitude throughout our school that you see on a daily basis. Monthly principals post, that's something where you can find on the school website, a communication that I put out there on a monthly basis. All JBF stakeholders are welcome to provide feedback and engage in conversation. I try to send it out both in email and post it to the website, but I encourage parents as well to, if there's something that I share that you wish to, you know, touch base on, it's an open door, and so I've definitely had those conversations with parents as well. This slide here, I just wanted to show because it just shows how communication should be ongoing, it should be two-way, and this is just, it happens face-to-face, it's like a handshake. It can sometimes be digitally, it can sometimes be how I'm sharing things, and so we have really tried to capitalize on the ways that we communicate with one another. We're very excited about this school year. I did reference November 28th, so I just want to share that because we're very excited about this assembly. It's an afternoon assembly, so from 2:30 to 3 o'clock, you're welcome to come if you can, and we are focusing on celebration of success, our reading plus strides, acts of kindness, and our spirit of gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Yeah, and the excellence slide, I was kind of wondering whether the Lego League was still...
Yes, Lego League is still running, and Ms. Waki and Ms. Ebling are off to a great start this school year, and it's highly attended, so a lot of students will participate.
And thank you for your emphasis on equity, we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I have a question on the communication slide.
Yep.
You mentioned for the reflective and restorative conversation with students. So were you getting feedback from students, or is it conversation with the teachers, administrators?
Both, and I will say, even in some of my conversation with students as it relates to classroom and cafeteria expectations, what does it look like when we're walking in the hall, what does it look like when we're in the cafeteria, voice level, so on? They have helped to inform some of those things. We just are putting up new posters as it relates to those expectations, but I would say more specifically, one of the things that have really stood out to me this year is some of my conversation just about sometimes when students have not so much a positive interaction with another student, and just engaging them on reflecting on what that looks like, what could you have done differently, what could you have said differently, and helping to be transparent in how to restore that relationship.
Do you see any positive change after those kind of conversations?
I do.
Good, well, thank you.
A little more detail on the fifth grade input. Did you have a formal survey, or how does that work, and what did you learn?
So I spent a couple of days just outside with the students during recess. I talked to some of our parents, and then I sent our fifth grade teachers a survey for the fifth grade students to complete, and they gave some input about what they enjoyed during recess, if they can change one thing, what would that be, if they can make one addition to the playground, what would that be, and so in preparation for when I come to talk again soon, a couple of months from now, I'll share a little bit more details and share specifically the results from that survey and some of the data from there, and what students specifically said about recess.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Great job. Cassandra?
Good evening, thank you for having me. Some of the PowerPoint slides are going to be very similar to Ms. Sessa's. You just told her sometimes great minds do things alike. So for leadership focus, and some of these slides are a direct answer to the questions and the requests that were proposed by Dr. Landall, I felt I had to lay out that it's my belief that the foundation of a strong leader is based on being consistent and fair when it comes to dealing with the negativity that may come with sensitive issues, and by treating all stakeholders, students, staff, and parents with kindness and respect. And I know some of you may have access to the PowerPoint, and there's some notes underneath. So what comes to mind here for me specifically is modeling. I feel it's very important to model for the students and for the teachers. Each and every day is a new day, so you may have left school with a bad day the day before, but to start fresh every day and welcoming the students in with a positive attitude, kindness, hugs, and love every morning is the best part of the day. But then handling uncomfortable conversations and ensuring that the students are always at the forefront of those conversations, what the students' needs are academically, emotionally, you know, whatever it may be, but advocating for the students, providing them... That can either be for, you know, the teachers to communicate with for, you know, even if it's scheduling our birthday parties or pet class picnics or field trips, things like that, but then also have that person be comfortable to be a liaison for parents who may not feel comfortable going directly to the teacher or going to the building principal. So the goal is really just to build communication amongst parents and then also within the school as a community. So this year, our PDIS team decided to rebrand a little bit around the tiger. And in doing that, we came up with a new pledge that we thought was a little bit easier for students to remember and again, it, its focus is around kindness. From the teaching standpoint and even from the student standpoint, anytime there is a discipline issue or a disagreement or anything like that that comes up in the school, this is sort of what we can hold students to. Like if it's not kind, it's, it's not okay. So, I pledged myself this very day to be kind in every way, to every person, big or small, and give it my Glennam Tiger All. And all of the students have started reciting that every morning on our news show. So, I think after day two, most of the students knew it. And there's a picture on there actually of Mrs. McGinley and Ms. Matrim Twang's kindergarten class. And that lesson happened to be around the kindness pledge and then also learning how to say thank you in all different world languages. So it's funny, Ms. McGinley came to me today and said, you know, we had a sight word test today and this boy didn't know any of his sight words, but he knew arrogato, which was how to say it. I was like, that's good. So, again, the focus for PDIS is building empathy as a school, understanding that everyone has a different paradigm and that kindness always counts. Out of the Zone reference is just where, where I am out of my comfort zone. Our job is to teach the students that we have, not the ones we would like to have, not the ones we used to have, those we have right now and all of them. And this graphic was shared with me by one of my PPS friends and we happened to be having a similar conversation to what this graphic states and it hit the nail on the head for me. It's a demonstration of how I'm out of my comfort zone because I feel like I'm pushing the other adults to be out of their comfort zone. And a lot of the conversations is, these aren't the students that you taught 20 years ago, these aren't the students that you taught last year, these are your students this year, these are your students now. You need to understand them as little people and where they're coming from and you, you need to focus your academics and focus your instruction to their needs. So it's really been coming up with individualized approaches across the board. Speaking to, continuing, I should say, out of the zone, so a shift in teaching practices with an equal focus on social emotional skills and academics. How we teach is just as important as what we teach and I have been privileged to be able to work with Mr. Wright a whole lot on the science curriculum and the changing standards and that is a paradigm shift and a pedagogical shift that I'm very excited for as a science major. So that right there, you know, how we're teaching is, is so important along with what we're teaching. And then partnership and communication with families, building connections for students and cognitive growth through social interaction. So then I can also speak to this slide a little bit more with having my conversations in the beginning of the school year with some of the central administrators. This is reflective of the responsive classroom approach and I just found out from Mr. Wright last week that official training for us will start in the spring.
Yes.
So we're very excited about that.
March 8.
March 8. Speaking to our equity team, if any of you looked at this slide earlier, our mission is really like three very long sentences that we have to narrow down, but we are a new team in the building. So, the Glennam Equity Team will focus to enhance and improve efforts to ensure academic success and extracurricular access for all students. We will look for ways to close opportunity gaps for students and provide equitable and inclusive working and learning environments for students, families and staff. We will create a space to recognize and understand differences and to celebrate them. So our focus is something that Sharaki Hawley said over the summer when we were in Ithaca and it's resonated with me. Who are your underserved students and with that answer, you have your reasons to be culturally and linguistically responsive. So, our goal as a team is to survey students in the simplest way possible because they are, you know, four and up. And then, we've already started having conversations. We are fortunate to have a parent member now on our equity team and we're starting in December with a family diversity program within classrooms, which I think will be really helpful for several students in the building who, who that will impact. And speaking to, you know, different family dynamics and building understanding amongst students. So one of the other things that we've done in the past and will continue to do, we have students and we have one with alopecia, we have another with cochlear implants, sort of medical disabilities that are recognizable to other students. And when questions started to come up more and more, conversations with parents, they were very open to come in and do presentations building wide. So we, we had parents come in in both situations and educate the other students and when they have an understanding of the other kids who they're in classes with, they can be empathetic, they can understand, they can, you know, build better relationships. Along with that, from a cultural standpoint, we have a student from Palestine who, each year he teaches his class about Eid and then we have two students from India who, last year they taught a class about Zavali and they've since moved out of the district. So, we'll see what happens this year. But, it's been a wonderful, and even from the parents' perspective, it's been a wonderful response to be able to allow them the opportunity to talk about their culture and their traditions and share that with their classmates, so their classmates can understand them as a person outside of school. Relevant data, we begin our data meetings last month. We have them scheduled about every six to eight weeks or on an as needed basis. We've had many, you know, random meetings just to follow up on, on some particular cases in between. Our main focus is on our DRI assessments, our Fanta's and Penel data, our AIMS web, our progress monitoring tool. And then, this year as a building, we are using the Dolch sight word list, so it's consistent building wide and that's been very helpful coming into RTI meetings to have data that is a little more meaningful because there, you have more comparisons. These conversations also give teachers the opportunity to share both academic and social emotional concerns that they had about students so that we can address the concerns right away at the start of the school year. The reading specialist was able to strategize with the teacher to implement classroom strategies and then also, if necessary, we were able to provide the student with AIS or two or three pullout services. And then also from the meetings this year, in the beginning of the year, we had a couple of referrals for counseling. We set up parent meetings to start, you know, proactive communication. And then, we also had any additional supports for like AIS math as part of the conversation. So ongoing projects, I felt like I could have made 10 slides for this, so I tried to keep it in my home. So, the conversation of just shifting our language, both from the PDIS standpoint and then also the growth mindset vocabulary, that we have signage now going up in the building and there's just been a conversation around that. It's been a little bit informal, but it's something that is definitely happening. We have student council creating public service announcements for our news show, so they're done not around problematic behaviors on the playground, like how to play tag appropriately, you can't tag heads, you know, knock kids down, things like that, or any change in process in the building. So like our new water fountain, it tends to spill all over the floor, so they show the kids how you fill your water bottle up the correct way and then they air that on the morning news. So it's a school-wide show. Girls on the Run and Young Tritons both kicked off this year, so those are groups that create communities amongst the students and then also encourage exercise. They've both successfully completed five K's this past, the past two weekends. And then, a focus on creating meaningful experiences that students can learn from and I have some examples coming up. Collaboration with the PTO to increase movement breaks in areas of the school for students to reorganize through sensory paths. So our PTO was very generous last year and created an amazing room with crash pads and a hamster wheel and all sorts of fun things for the students to go to and get some energy out as needed, but they also would like to create some sensory paths around the school, you know, a hand wall push-up area. So when students, we have a nice lap, if students go to do a lap, they can stop and do the necessary things while they're away. We also, our social worker has been having conversations and there's going to be an upcoming training around adverse childhood experiences and trauma. And then, we are continuing with our monthly character education traits and also our pro awards. And those are the first three students on the left who got pro awards this year and then the picture on the right is at the end of last year and that window gets covered with all the students' names. I couldn't not add a lot of pictures of kids. So I added a couple of slides at the end, just pre-K and second grade, they had a Thanksgiving brunch and lunch celebration today. Tomorrow, fourth grade has a Friendsgiving. This is from the Spirit of Beacon Day Parade and our float really celebrated what made all the students unique. So I did bring a couple hands just for you guys to take a look at. So they wrote on the hands what makes them, what makes them special, but I feel like on the float, it was a little bit hard to see. So we do have all of the artwork from the float hanging up in the multi-purpose room around the school. At the beginning of the year, we started the year off with Brian, I always mess up his name, Chevalier. He's a musician who comes in and he did a mindfulness assembly this year and also the kids all sang and danced about mindfulness and, and building respect and relationships. Second grade went to Barton Orchards and they went apple and pumpkin picking and got to go on a cave ride. Fifth grade pasta dinner, our fifth grade this year is small, it's only two sections, but it's about 85% boys. So you can see that picture on the right there is a whole bunch of our fifth grade boys ready for the pasta dinner. We had a great turnout, they raised almost $2,000. In library media now, we have the teachers able to go into the classroom with the librarian or library media specialist. So we've been able to do a lot of fun projects and here's students learning about how to work collaboratively and then also problem solve.
Any questions for Cassandra?
I was wondering if you could explain the growth mindset vocabulary?
Sure. So, we've just really started and it's come, it's coming out of our PDIS team. It really just so happened that we found, I, I found posters and I brought them to the team and was like, guys, look at this, these are fun things to hang around the school. So rather than like the, I can't do this or I'm not, you know, I'm not able to do this, it's been a shift to, I can do this and this is how. And it's really just been, so part of the PDIS is instead of yelling at a kid in the hallway for, you know, slow down, stop running, it's please use your walking feet, show me how you can use your walking feet nicely in the hallway. So it's just changing sort of the whole atmosphere to be more positive.
That sounds great.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll say a comment that years ago, there was significant differences between the elementary schools and from the presentation we've seen, there's a consistent message, you know, being carried throughout, which is really, which is really, it's a positive message and different ways of doing things and looking at things differently. So it's, that's really, I think it shows, you know, leadership and then it's definitely rolling down to the principals and the schools and to the families and kids, so I think that's excellent.
No more silos. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, comments, it's great work you're doing there, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, great job. All right, we mixed up the agenda a little bit tonight, so we're going to go to open to the public. I just need to grab a book. We have one person sign up, Fritz.
Hi, I'm Fritz Cernica, I'm the Duchess County Legislature, legislature for District 16, which includes Board Four and Beacon. I got an email from Justin Lynch a couple of days ago asking for some clarification about the stadium bond issue. I was a no vote on that and as the yes votes didn't get the full number they needed, the bond didn't pass. There seems to have been some alarm generated by that vote and about what it means. I'm here because I hope, I think I can pretty easily allay any concerns people might have about why we voted no and what we meant to do about that. Does everybody here share that concern or have some idea about what's happened and where that leaves us?
Yes.
Really talking about, you know, if you're already aware of what's going on, you know, I want to, I want to, I need to know where you're at so I can address what the issues or possibly misconceptions may be. And actually, no sooner I said that than I realized, we in the legislature have been at something of a disadvantage because we don't know what, what you have come to in terms of what you want to do going forward with this deal. Speaking for myself, and I, I'm pretty sure I can say this, for all the other members in my caucus who voted no, no one wants to abandon the stadium. No one wants to abandon responsibility for the stadiums, upkeep. No one challenges the fact, though, exactly the degree to which it's true is open to some question, but no one challenges the fact that stadium could use some, some upkeep, if not a full renovation. Neither does anyone challenge that the renegades provide a valuable, fun thing to do in Duchess County and that's a draw and it's got all kinds of benefits to the community. What we're missing here, however, is a specific plan, a well-developed budget for what this bond is going to do. What we heard from the administration was that once the bond was secured and they had the money, then they would proceed to get a memorandum of understanding from the renegades about what they were going to do. Speaking frankly for myself, I don't know what turnip truck I'm supposed to have fallen off or I'm going to give you all this money before you tell me what you're going to do. And really, it's no more complicated than that. We need to know where the money's going to go before we're okay. And I'd say that, that's really about it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So I would like to make a motion to have a dialogue for this public comment instead of just a statement. So I'm asking for a motion to suspend policy 1230 at this time.
Still vote.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pos? Motion carry. Thank you for your patience, I just needed to, because public comment usually is under the back of the floor, so I just needed to make sure that we suspended it for this purpose. So, basically, we are going to have a discussion and it's on the agenda, have a discussion about this, the MOU. It was the board's understanding that since September, the, our attorney, as well as the county attorney, was working on a memorandum of understanding with the district and the county to about why we voted no and what we meant to do about that. Does everybody here share that concern or have some idea about what's happened and where that leaves us?
Yes.
Really talking about, you know, if you're already aware of what's going on, you know, I want to, I need to know where you're at so I can address what the issues or possibly misconceptions may be. And actually, no sooner I said that than I realized, we in the legislature have been at something of a disadvantage because we don't know what you have come to in terms of what you want to do going forward with this deal. Speaking for myself, and I'm pretty sure I can say this for all the other members in my caucus who voted no, no one wants to abandon the stadium. No one wants to abandon responsibility for the stadiums, upkeep. No one challenges the fact, though, exactly the degree to which it's true is open to some question, but no one challenges the fact that the stadium could use some upkeep, if not a full renovation. Neither does anyone challenge that the Renegades provide a valuable, fun thing to do in Dutchess County, and that's a draw, and it's got all kinds of benefits to the community. What we're missing here, however, is a specific plan, a well-developed budget for what this bond is going to do. What we heard from the administration was that once the bond was secured and they had the money, then they would proceed to get a memorandum of understanding from the Renegades about what they were going to do. Speaking frankly for myself, I don't know what turn of truck I'm supposed to have fallen off, or I'm going to give you all this money before you tell me what you're going to do. And really, it's no more complicated than that. We need to know where the money's going to go before we okay. And I'd say that's really about it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So I would like to make a motion to have a dialogue for this public comment instead of just a statement. So I'm asking for a motion to suspend policy 1230 at this time.
So what?
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pos? Motion carry. Thank you for your patience. I just needed to, because public comment usually is on the pack before, so I just needed to make sure that we suspended it for this purpose. So basically, we are going to have a discussion, and it's on the agenda, have a discussion about the MOU. It was the board's understanding that since September, our attorney, as well as the county attorney, was working on a memorandum of understanding with the district and the county to come up with extending the lease until the county could finalize or work on the lease with the Renegades. When the vote came up on the 13th, it was a shocker that the memorandum, that you guys didn't vote for the bond. And I did watch the video, but I don't want to speak personally, I want to speak on behalf of the board. So it was our understanding that we were working towards a memorandum of understanding. And then to hear that on the 31st, that the county executive was like, we're not going to re-up the lease.
Right.
When it was done, because the funding for the improvements of the stadium didn't go forth. So there is a time crunch here based on that, because as of December 31st, the lease is up.
That's correct. The lease is up as of December 31st, but from our perspective in the legislature, and you know, I ran on a platform of no longer simply rubber stamping what the administration wants to do, but actually acting as is our duty under the charter, as a check and balance on the executive branch. So I want to know, where's this money going? And I feel that that's, at its most basic level, my responsibility to you as taxpayers. And we didn't get an answer for that. So the time crunch became something of a threat, right? You okay this bond, or the lease is up and the Renegades leave town. But when I asked the Renegades' general manager if they were going anywhere in 2019, he said no. So...
But I don't know if you understand that if you don't renew the lease and the lease isn't renewed, they don't want to be the county decision.
Is there an opportunity for the legislature to revisit this?
Yes.
Before, because otherwise the lease, like I said...
December 3rd will be the next opportunity. And so what we have asked for is a list of specifics that will assure us what, again, what we're bonding. Because at this point, we're bonding a promise that there's a philosophical framework within which the Renegades and the county are proceeding forward on the renovations. But, you know, that's a bit of a mirage.
I mean, for us, the issue, right to the bond is a big issue, but for us, is whether or not we will continue or have an extension on this lease, or if it's going to expire December 31st. If it expires, then we have to make, figure out what we're going to do, right?
And that's the question, is if it doesn't get, if they don't renew the lease, we have to then decide as a board, what are we going to do?
Right.
You mentioned, Anthony, you mentioned that we got an email from the executive saying that the resolution failed that week we have the stadium. That's not public knowledge, actually. So maybe he didn't know that.
Well, I actually...
He also, there is a portion of that, the email is not public knowledge, but there was a direct interview with the county executive on local radio.
Yeah, I've seen the papers and...
That he made that statement.
The bond did fail, and he was there.
Yeah, but that was after, that was after the vote that he made that interview, right?
He told me after the vote that it had failed 13 to nine.
Yeah.
There's statements in the paper that, the statement that, I guess maybe they'll do that we're not, you know, the school district knows the stadium.
Right, I mean, basically, and that's what happens if they don't renew the lease, which, and I watched your meeting, and Mr. Molinaro did say that if they don't increase, if you don't approve, the legislators don't approve the funding, he can't see going forward to renewing the lease and not have the stadium be approved. So I understand what he was saying, I understand what the legislators were saying from a district perspective. And I have a hard time with the county that we're in, and we're an educational facility, and we happen to have a stadium on our land that we lease that started in 1994. Whatever happens from here on out would take money away from students, whether it be that we need to find out what we're going to do with the stadium, if it's that you guys don't renew the lease, the insurance cost will probably go up because it's an abandoned building on our property, whether we have to find a way to renovate it to get somebody to lease it and/or sell it to them, or whether we decide to tear it down because it's on our property and we want to do something else. No matter what option we look at, we're taking money away from kids to address a stadium.
Okay, from my perspective, the problem there is, there's, you know, the larger problem within the capital plan is things haven't been prioritized. So we don't know which of these budget proposals goes first, which is most important. At no point has it been made clear, you know, the stadium is a sporting facility, takes this precedence, the needs of students takes this. When the money runs out, you know, what goes? So I understand your concern about taking money away from kids if the lease isn't renewed, but this is a $6 million bond. That money, that'll be money that can't be spent on kids.
Yeah, but I also heard that there's a bond that you guys, or a grant that you guys had from Empire State Development.
Uh huh.
Which was granted in 2017. So something was in the works from 2017 to present to help fund the repairs to the stadium, I'm assuming. But then I also watched, and there was a $5 million bond approved for the extension of the rail trail, and there was no discussion about it.
Well, there was discussion in committee, and the rail trail bond, distinct from this one, had a very specific list of what the money was going to be used to do. That is not the case here. I can't stress that enough, it's a simple fact. And in fact, when the county executive says, it was a little unclear at the meeting, and you watched the tape, you must have seen this, he said, "If this bond does not go through, we will have to let the Renegades go and let the lease expire." Legislator Edwards then asked him, if he was saying, "If we did not approve the bond, he would let the lease expire." He said, "No, that's not what he was saying. He was saying that was the position we were putting him in." Now, I'll leave it to you to split that hair, but I don't know how else to put it. If this comes down to a game of chicken, I don't think that lease will be allowed to expire, and I don't think the Renegades are going anywhere. What we need to see is a better developed, more specific proposal for what this money's going to be used for, how the repairs are going to be affected, and how the relationship with the Renegades going forward is going to be fleshed out.
Would you say, would you say that your position is similar to the op-ed published by legislator Edwards in this past Beacon City Journal?
Yes, I, yes.
Lays out that nobody wants the Renegades to...
Nobody wants the Renegades to leave. Nobody wants the ownership of the stadium to redound to Beacon City School District. Nobody wants the insurance problems or the boondoggle of having, as you said, having it tear down or having to find somebody to sell it. That's just too complicated. The best solution would indeed be for us to move forward as a county, maintaining the stadium and keeping the Renegades there. But again, the specifics of how that's going to happen are simply not there, and historically speaking.
When Mr. Cernica, you asked how we felt about it in general, I think we all are kind of surprised to see this issue land on our doorstep. There are members of this board who are very new, and some of them probably did not know that we owned that land, or that we own a total of some 64 acres there or what's on it. Only recently did we take a tour of the bus garage, which is a school facility that was actually built there. That land was acquired and we land banked for the potential building of school facilities. And we wound up with a high school and a middle school elsewhere, but we did wind up with a bus garage and maintenance facilities up there. We really haven't looked at what we're doing with the entire parcel of land, all three sections. And this issue goes somewhat beyond just the talk about the stadium, as we'll probably discuss this in greater detail later. I hope you can stay for that discussion as well. I think that we were surprised and feeling a little bit pushed. I feel rather pushed on this matter, and I like to know that we're making a good decision that is in the interest of people that I represent. Unlike you, I'm not a Dutchess County legislator, I'm a trustee of the Beacon City School District, and those are the interests that we're here to protect. So we want to look this over very carefully. I do think we favor seeing that the Renegades stay, if that can be done, but that's the county's deal, not ours.
Exactly.
But Craig, only until December 31st.
Right.
If they don't go forth, then it's going to be our, whether we want the Renegades to continue or not. What are we going to do with the stadium?
Deals can always be pulled out of the fire.
That is if the lease is not renewed. And that being contingent on this bond, I'm not 100% sure about. You spoke about being rushed. That's exactly how we, as legislators, felt when, days before the bond, we were told, you know, "You do this, or all these consequences accrue." And yet, as everyone here knows, this is something that's been in discussion for years, certainly since September. Why did you come to the legislature at the last minute? Is our question, I'm not here to rush you. I think we're in the same boat on that score. Historically, this has happened before since I've been serving. There's a building on 45 Market Street across from the county legislative buildings that the county purchased to house the public defender in. He needs new offices. That building was bonded, again, without a plan, as is the case here. There were cost overruns, there was a time overrun, they came to us for more money. It's like, well, what, what'd you do with the initial money? And there, here it's the Renegades who are going to be thrown under the bus if we want to take care of it. There, it was the public defender's office. So, once again, we're faced with this scenario, which may or not ultimately pertain, but if we don't do as we're being told, we're throwing somebody under the bus, either Beacon City School District and the Renegades, or the public defender, or what have you. And our position is that that's simply got to stop. We need to see what the money's being spent on.
If I can make a clarification, you know, that's a record to show. You know, I appreciate Anthony summarizing, but I think some of it is his opinion and not the board's, and some of it is the board's.
I clarified the board's stance, and then I said I'm speaking, I'm going to myself.
All right. Because, I mean, you know, I kind of sympathize with making a rushed financial decision where you're trying to approve a bond of $2.00 plus million, and you only have a month and a half left for the lease, you know, how's that guarantee that that bond will be used properly? So I sympathize with that. I mean, I know we struggled in the first year, that I was on the board on some of those decisions, I had to get explanations of our financial codes and all of this stuff. So it's been a learning process for us as well. But I will also say that, you know, I don't think, and I speak personally, I don't think I'm interested in owning the stadium. So, you know, we wish to have, I think on the agenda, we have an extension so that give you guys a little more room to sort this thing out, and hopefully have a look.
Can you specify what you, I'm not aware of that, the extension.
Yeah, there's an item on our, there's an item on our agenda for the extension of the lease for one year?
For one year.
Right, the resolution spelled out right, the resolution.
Yes, right there.
Okay, no, it's, I'll take your butt. So that, to some extent, that alleviates the concern about what...
It doesn't, because the legislator has to approve it as well.
Right.
So we could approve it on our end, but it's a two-party agreement. And the county executive has already said that they're not going to extend the memorandum of understanding on the lease if the bonding doesn't go through.
Right, so we're proposing the memorandum of understanding in order to extend the lease until the end of 2019 to allow that time.
And I'm not ready to play chicken with the kids' education.
Right.
And that's the piece that, you mentioned the word playing chicken as to what's going to go forth. We're talking about kids' education, and it could affect us significantly if we end up with that stadium, and I'm not willing to play chicken with that.
Well, and so, just to, just to take this down a notch, I think that we appreciate you coming here to talk to us, especially as our local legislator, and you definitely are here answering questions. We're talking about a two-party agreement where one of the parties who has kind of brought this to a point of brinkmanship is not here. So the statement that was made was by the county executive saying that they wouldn't approve this. What would be great to hear from the legislators is, you've made these, you know, requests for information and transparency. What is the plan for, you know, what are you, are you being specific? Are you saying what you're looking for? There's another opportunity for you to meet and discuss this. It does, this whole situation, not, you know, it's, it is a Gordian knot of sorts. And so, we, as a district, struggle with funds. You know, every year, we come up against our budget and basically have to do two different budgets. And there, we are trying to rebuild programming very carefully, and we have a lot of students in need in our district. So it is, it is something that we feel very personally, and it's not something that we can, in any way, both as our fiduciary trustee responsibility, or just knowing what and who exactly loses in these deals, it does get emotional. But the flip side is, you guys are grownups, and you can go back and say, "We want this information," and then please develop a plan for how you're going to get back to us and maybe relay this information to the county executive or direct them to this tape, and say that when he's making those, when he's making those comments, what he's talking about is a Title I district with a lot of students on free, already priced lunch, and he's talking about their education and their future. And when you're voting to passively put a stadium in our hands for us to have to manage, that's what's coming up to us as well, just so you realize.
No, I fully understand that, and I, it's, I have absolutely no interest in playing brinkmanship or chicken with children's education. But I think, from my perspective, a budget properly prioritized, and we're not just, you know, throwing money at, we don't know what. It's a better way to ensure that there's more funding to devote to children's education.
Our funding is separate, though. That's what, they're not, our funding doesn't necessarily come from the county. So that's why, we're a separate entity dealing with our own budget. And so when we, when that, when that comes to ownership to us, that's money that comes out of our budget. So that's why, that's what we sort of fear. So I get what you're saying, as a taxpayer, it's very clear. And we do know, but it's like, we've been in a position of having to make, you know, last-minute decisions and being pushed. And one of the things that was, you know, great about hiring Dr. Landau is, he said to the board that hired him, like, "I will always give you time and space and information to make decisions." So we definitely sympathize with the position that you feel you've been put in, in the sense, or I can say I can sympathize with that, because it's not, it doesn't feel good to have something land on your lap. I mean, to Anthony's point, this was something that's been in the works since 2017, and I understand that you have a lot of things coming down the pike at you. This is just one that lands on us and is imminent. And so if there can be some sort of plan to, you know, we're going to discuss this MOU later, which provides an extension, so that's knowledge you can take back to the legislators and then...
We'll be calling this again next Monday to make sure we all know, no votes, where we stand based on information we received from the administration and now from you. Looking forward to probably another vote on this on December 3rd. If we get the information that we felt was lacking, the issue's resolved.
So if you don't, then you vote against it on November, December 3rd, then that's like, that's it?
What may, what may...
They'll vote for the plan. Well, they vote on the items separately. I assume that when they set the agenda, they'll vote the bond separately, then the lease extension, or something. Because even, because even if they pass the bond, there's nothing in front of the legislator that will, that will stop the end of the lease. They have to vote on something to extend that lease, and that's never been presented yet to the legislature. I mean, it's almost like putting the cart before the horse.
Oh, well, and that's their house, that's, we had knowledge of it. We've had conversations with our attorney about it and stuff.
Yeah, we have been, recently, informational, a lot, that's why.
We have, we have not until, really, a couple of weeks ago.
Can I ask, so let's say you approve the bond, and you're not sure of the plan, and then, like the example you gave with the office building, there are cost overruns. What does that look like? What happens then? And what ways does that affect us as a district if that happened?
I don't have anything to say. It's there, it works out between them.
Well, well, not the lease, it'll be ours again.
No, but if she's...
No, if it's approved, and then there's all these cost overruns.
It just affects us ultimately as taxpayers in Dutchess County, but it does not affect the district.
But they're still obligated.
They still have a promise to pay us for the lease, and we don't have ownership of the stadium, or the maintenance, or the liability on our insurance.
Okay.
Yeah, but this lease extension is still, still only for a year. Within a year, we still need, are going to need to figure out what a longer term plan is.
At least we can start planning for Plan B and C.
But then, with lease, we will be able to start planning about what to do. So, and I was... So, and planning will cost money as well. It's gonna come out of our budget as well, just to cover the planning evaluations, et cetera.
Fritz, I have a question. So, my understanding is that, that this is not the first bond that's come up. There've been several that have passed in the, in the past, the initial bond to pay for the building, the stadium, and renovations in the past, is that right?
Right.
Are those paid off?
No. Part of the, part of the argument for keeping the relationship with the Renegades now, extending this bond, is because then you get debt service, and I'm getting out of my desk, it turns me around, see you. Debt service on the bond has already been spent. That'll be taken care of by having a relationship with the Renegades.
That's my, my question is, is that the administration put forward any kind of idea? If they do back out, and they say they're not gonna renew the lease, do they have a plan for paying that back?
No, that's a million and a half dollars for the county to spend in coal.
They'd be walking away from a twenty point five million dollar stadium.
So, we don't necessarily have any, I mean, we've heard from the county executive that this is sort of what's at stake if we don't pass, if you don't pass this. But what's a trade-off for that is, if they do back out of this, as he's threatening, they're gonna take significant loss, the county will take significant loss. That's what we're looking at.
That's correct, that's, that, or that aligns with my understanding.
Right.
We do have, the, I'm sorry, is it Robert? Mr. Duckin? Did you have anything that you wanted to add as the public works person from the?
Yeah, can I add some comments if you wish?
Sure, can you come to the mic?
Sure.
Thank you, Fritz.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Robert Ballkeine, I'm the Dutchess County Public Works Commissioner. The stadium falls within the Public Works Department as one of our facilities. It's one of our county parks. In fact, it's almost called our county park that provides the most revenue of all of our parks, including Bowden. So, it's a real, it's a real big asset for Dutchess County. Just a couple of things, I was asked by the county executive's office to reinforce if I was given the opportunity to offer comments to you all. Number one, county executives doing everything they can to get the votes that they need in the legislature to get the bond approved. It's an important project to the county executive, it's an important project to me. And I think more importantly, it's an important project to you. And it's an important project to the folks who visit the stadium every year, and for the folks who operate the stadium, the Hudson Valley Renegades Organization. We understand that if the stadium seating isn't repaired, if the concrete isn't repaired, and get those safety issues addressed. We understand that Minor League Baseball is going to evaluate whether the stadium is going to be suitable for use in 2019. That's been, that's been a driving factor in all of this, just as some background, is that the Renegades who operate the stadium have been asking for the county to performance proper stewardship of the facility and replace the seats and fix the concrete. For those of you who may have gone to the stadium in recent years, you'll notice that some of the seats are broken. There's some concrete damage as you walk up and down the concourse areas. Those are safety issues that we would like to address and minimize some of our liability. So, we, we understand that the legislature will, in fact, consider this question again at its December third meeting. And we're hoping by then, the legislature will get the answers that they are asking for and make a decision to approve the bond. I can tell you that in no uncertain terms, the county executive is thoroughly not interested in turning the stadium over to you all. We want it to be a county facility, we want it to be a county park. The county, through its taxpayers, has invested a lot of money in the stadium, in its upkeep and its maintenance. We put a lot of promotional efforts into it. We've worked very closely with the Renegades organization to create that branding image that attracts so many people to the stadium every year. So, we, as a county, have no interest in, in finding a, you know, a way out of the stadium. We don't want that. We want the stadium, we wanna keep the stadium. We think it's a huge asset of the county, and we think we're the best ones in the best position to manage and operate it with the Renegades. So, I just wanna reassure you, at the very least, that the county executive is very committed to finding a way forward. The simple fact is, we do need money to repair the stadium. I think the bond request that the legislature considered recently and voted, voted down, it did explain where the money was being requested, and what was being requested for. Basically, seating replacements, concrete repairs, and parking lot improvements. While the legislature certainly feels that the question came before them without what they believe a reasonable amount of time to consider and evaluate the request, I think the request itself was at least clear of what the money, of what the money was being asked for. If I may, a couple of questions that were asked, and I think I could provide some, some light to. Recent, just the last question about the, the status of previous bonds and the balances that may still be out there. As it stands now, there are, there are balances, in fact, from previous bonds that the county would owe, whether or not the county maintained ownership of the stadium. If we, if we sort of cut the cord now, and the stadium went away from the county, the county taxpayers would still be on the hook for principal and borrowing costs for previous, for previous borrowing. I believe it's in the tune of about a hundred, one point five million, in that range. And I believe that, that needs to be paid off, I believe, between now and 2023.
I have some two questions.
Sure.
One, the first thing that you, one of the first things you said is that Minor League Baseball is going to come in in 2019 to evaluate whether they would certify that stadium. I'm just curious as to that timeframe. If this lease was coming up, and this was going to be one of the issues, was there any way for the county to have that, that organization come in ahead of time and maybe make that determination? Because having it sort of hanging over in 2019, then feels like, you know, especially if we end up owning the stadium, then we find out that we have this unusable piece of property. So, has the county reached out to Minor League Baseball and asked for that to be expedited in any way?
Actually, we, we don't have the relationship with Minor League Baseball. Minor League Baseball strictly operates through the, through the Renegades organization. They are, they are an organization within Minor League Baseball. We are basically being told by the Renegades that Minor League Baseball is, is going to be evaluating the stadium. My understanding is that Minor League Baseball evaluates the stadium, I believe it's every two years. It might be annually, but I believe they produce a report every two years. And the report lists various things that they find with the stadium. Some of them are, some of them are really sort of hard-line concrete requirements. For instance, the base, the base paths need to be ninety feet between bases. There are certain very rigorous measurements and requirements that Minor League Baseball will insist on. And there are certain other recommendations that they make that I'm not so sure that they would, they would actually deny use of the team, you know, deny the team to play at the stadium. We're, we're waiting to see this report also. I believe we're going to have it soon, we're going to have a letter from the Renegades or correspondence from the Renegades.
So, they're coming in ahead of 2019, then, to do that evaluation?
They may have already been. I'm not sure, I don't know what their schedule, you know, what their protocol is for reviewing the stadium. But my understanding is, we're going to have something from the Renegades that will indicate to us what Minor League Baseball is indicating. I know in years past, they've indicated that the safety netting behind the, behind the home plate wasn't, wasn't extending out along the sidelines far enough to protect spectators. Last year, we had to replace the netting system and extend it down the baselines, because that was, I guess, a relatively newer Minor League or Baseball standard. So, there are certain things that they tell us we have to do, and we do them.
Who, fleet the Renegades?
We, we, the county owner of the facility, had to do this, the netting. They, they indicate to the Renegades that the netting needs to be redone. The Renegades then communicate to us and say, Minor League Baseball is indicating that the netting needs to be redone, and then we redid the netting last year. So, that was like a have to have it done type of thing.
Right, first thing to do. So, and also, just, I don't know if you had the chance to read Legislature Edward's op-ed in the City Journal? So, the same organization owns the team in South Carolina. And it sounds like there's been some effort to kind of partner and make it more appealing for that organization to stay through co-marketing efforts. And that, some of the things, you know, reading that op-ed, it seemed like there were some very good and useful pieces of information to sort of nurture that relationship and put into a bond plan that then would, you know, help to make everybody feel better. It, I mean, there's so many ways in which I think none of us want to be, you, you sat through a lot of the presentations tonight. We wanna hear about kindness pledges, we wanna talk about student learning, we wanna focus on making sure that we increase children, you know, opportunities across the board. So, that's really what we would rather be talking about, so as you can imagine. This is not.
I would suggest that a lot of the discussions you had earlier about kindness and transparency would go a long way in the, at the legislature, with the interaction between the county's executive.
Maybe they could do a day of writing.
If they could, if they could get them all down here for a lesson, I think it would go a long way. But, but in all seriousness, yeah, they're, the Renegades, the organization that owns the Renegades does own, they own actually multiple teams throughout the country. And they do, they do create these, these financial partnerships. In fact, this resolution request that you sort of got thrown into the, into the mix of, this is step one of a, of a multi-faceted request for funding that we, that we have through this Empire State Grant. This is phase one for three million. We hope to do next year, phase two, for another four point five million, to make, not just a, sort of a, get the, get the stadium backed up to a safe level, but that next phase would be to actually enhance the fan experience, like, like what Legislature Edward was describing in South Carolina. Really creating not just a safe stadium, but a great stadium. So, that's the next step. And then, if we get the Renegades into this long-term twenty-year lease, and the school district has, we have a twenty-year or so lease for the school district, then, then the investment potential really starts to grow, because everybody feels comfortable. The Renegades are going to be here, the county's fully vested in the, in the stadium again. And then, we can really work with the Renegades about growing the fan experience and bring that stadium to the next level. This is just the very first baby step in that multi-year process.
Well, it sounds like, you know, based on our, the legislature's book trust tonight and this op-ed, that you have some really important feedback. And it sounds like you guys know what you need to give them in order to feel comfortable. It would be a great relief to us if, if you guys were able to work that out.
Yeah, absolutely. And the county executive is thoroughly committed to that. We, we just can't do it without, without that first infusion of funding, so.
I have a question that I could maybe add. I read, and tell me if this is right, that the stadium currently brings a profit of around fifteen thousand dollars a year, is that right?
Generally speaking, over the last ten or so years, we've been very, very close to revenue neutral or cost neutral. In fact, in the last, I think the last three or four years, we've slightly dipped below the neutral line.
Can you specify what that loss amount has been in the last few years?
I, I don't, I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have the.
I recall in the neighborhood, forty thousand dollars a year is what we're presenting to the legislature.
I think that might have been an accumulation over the last three or four years, but I'm not, I'm not positive. I, I, I just don't know what the, what the exact numbers, I know like over that period.
Would I be right to assume that if this bond were to pass, that, that would go deeper into the revenue?
Yeah, because we would have, we would be paying off that debt service over the next however many years, and there would be zero revenue coming in. So, yeah, we would certainly plunge much, much further below the line.
And do you believe that, I mean, I feel like there's been a few different interpretations of the county executive's statement that renewing the lease is gonna be dependent on this one passing. Do you take that to be a strict, sort of a, an absolute ultimatum? Or is, do you take that to be, as in, this would put him in that position to consider that?
Yeah. I'm afraid I'd be a bit remiss to try to characterize the county executive's intent of that. I was at the meeting and heard it, just, just like the legislator did. At the meeting, he expressed that he didn't feel it would be a position that he would be able to take, operating the stadium with, with a very known safe, you know, a well-known safety issue to bring fans into the stadium. So, I think his, I would characterize his statement as a genuine concern that without the money to maintain and improve the facility, he would be uneasy continuing to operate this.
Has the county put forward, maybe, you mentioned several phase requests, improving the audience experience, this kind of thing. Is there a sort of a reduced ask that sort of just brings it up to these safety concerns?
That's what this, that's what this first three million dollar project, which is really a two point four million dollar county, that's what this first part is, is to bring the stadium up to where everybody feels comfortable bringing fans into the facility. And the next, the second part of this Empire State Grant, which is the other four and a half million that we'd be seeking next year, would start to build those amenities and increase that fan experience. This three and a half million is that baseline to bring it up to where we feel comfortable.
Do you spend money on other parks to keep them up, maintain them?
Absolutely.
Do they bring in revenue?
They don't. So, this is, this is sort of a unique park in the sense that we actually can invest a fairly significant amount of money. We can create a great fan experience, create a good economic engine in Southern Dutchess County. And in fact, we get a return on our investment, we don't get that at other parks.
Do you spend the best, a lot more on the stadium because of the fan experience? Or is it similar to the way you spend on other parks in the county?
We, when we, when you figure the bond, even, even figuring the debt service, we don't spend an awful lot relative to our other parks. We, in the overall park system, the stadium is a relatively smaller amount of money. And in the park cost itself, we include debt service, which is almost the entire expense of the park operations. We, we don't spend a lot of operating money, it's really debt service that we, we bond, we borrow for money, we do big projects. And then, we use the revenue from our lease with the Renegades to pay that debt service. That's generally the model. We spend relatively small amount of operating budget money to keep that park active, despite the fact that it does make so much revenue.
Do you guys lease other parks to other agencies?
We don't. We lease pavilions and facilities like that at our other parks, but not, not an actual, you know, we don't have an operator operating our other park facilities.
And your other parks are generally free?
Yes, they are.
That's a question. So, you, so according to your calendar, you've got a meeting, you've got a legislature meeting, board, the third, the sixth, and then the seventeenth is supposed to be for budget override adoption times levy. When will the legislature consider voting on a new lease?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know, I don't know if, I'm not even sure if the legislature votes on a lease. I'm not sure if they just need to vote on the funding, or if they need to vote on the lease. Maybe the legislature here knows the answer to that.
I don't, this is the first I've heard about the idea that we would have any say in the lease. I would imagine that that is purely executive function, as there's no.
I have a feeling you might.
I gotta spend money to do that.
Or this, this MOU is to extend the existing lease, right? So, if they agreed on this MOU, then the new lease would not need to be finished for a year, right?
I still have another question, so.
Hold on, I think I have a question.
Well. I'm, well, I was trying to, I was sort of piggybacking on your question, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. But is that, does that make sense to you, what I just said, or?
I don't know, I mean, Fritz could probably answer that better.
I'm sorry, you're gonna have to repeat it.
I'm just, in terms of a new lease, I mean, what we're voting on tonight is an extension of the existing lease, and so, for a year. And so, that would give the county and us a year to negotiate a new lease.
I would, I would imagine that that's the case, yes. However, if renewing or extending the lease is purely up to the executive, I have no sway over his decision.
We're letting you go into extra innings.
So, so you were. I'd like to thank you all for so far. I'd like to, I'd like to thank you all for so far avoiding all baseball puns. That was well timed.
So you're aware that, you know, any lease agreement of school property is actually revisted by law from educational law, 403A, and, you know, we do have, uh, we have to respect our law, and that law says that we need to charge you fair market value, um, and all those other things that we need to dot the i's and cross the t's on. Um, do we, how close are you to getting the lease? Because you're also pushing us again, um, come in December, or, you know, maybe next December, so that we need to make sure that we, that we do what we need to do on our end.
I, I believe that if, if the school board authorizes the lease extension, I believe the county will, will seek to execute that lease extension. Um, and I, I get, I haven't had detailed conversations with the county executive, but my understanding is it's his intent. If you, if you authorize the lease extension, the county will also authorize the lease extension to put that piece of the puzzle in place to take the, sort of, stop the pendulum from swinging over this board. Um, and then, then we can focus with the legislature on working through bonding and the agreement with the renegades organization. But I, I believe the county executive's goal is to, um, just stop, stop the pressure on this board getting the one-year lease extension, um, and, and then trying to work the, work the issues out with the renegades in the legislature. Now, of course, the con, the corollary to that is by signing a lease extension with, with the board, um, the county is going to be obligated to make lease payments for that, for that lease duration, and the county would very much rather not be making a payment to the, to the city, uh, the Beacon School District without any revenue coming in. So we're trying to put these pieces in place so that all the pieces come together at the same time. And as you mentioned, the calendar's running out. We're now bearing down the end of November, and we have till the end of December. So we're trying to get in a position where we don't obligate to pay the board, let's pay the school district if, if we don't have revenue coming in, because otherwise that's just another expense the county has to bear.
But, but didn't you just say you didn't want to give the stadium to the school district?
That is correct. The county executive does not want that to happen.
So even if you're not getting revenue, you're gonna give it to the stadium to the school district?
If we, if the, if the lease doesn't, if the extension with the school district doesn't happen, then there is no additional payment that the county would make to the school district.
Are there other, um, are there other parks located on school district properties in Duchess County?
The county does not rent or lease land from any other school district.
And is the, the, I mean, generally, the, the sort of underlying mission of parks is not to generate revenue?
That is correct.
And this is a, this is a park located on district land within Duchess County?
Yeah. And although we say we generate revenue, the revenue that we generate offsets the, um, the debt service that we use to invest in the stadium. So we take out loans, we, we bond for money, we do stadium improvements, whether we upgrade the electrical system, the lighting system, uh, the sound system that we did recently, the netting, all of the capital improvements that the stadium needs, we bond for that money. We don't take it out of operating, like annual operating expenses. So the revenue we receive from the renegades organization through lease pays for that debt service that we use for that capital improvement, and it also helps pay for the money we give to the Beacon, uh, the school district.
And, and, well, and also, I think that in entering to the renegades and making this plan for this park long-term, there were some, there's some responsibility that's been assumed for these decisions. And in that responsibility was made a land on by a school district. So at some point, there has to be some awareness that the decisions that have been made and the, you know, plans that have been put forth were going to, you know, have the potential to impact the amount of money that's left to educate children.
Sure.
So I think, I, you know, the hope is that this, you know, is viewed through that lens, because that's the lens we look at if we're going to move forward.
And I, and I think the, um, I think the county executive does appreciate that position. In fact, we, uh, we did meet with the, the school board attorney about, maybe two months ago, I think, Dr., you were, you were present, and Anthony had...
I was there.
Um, but the idea was to try to, try to at least come to some understanding that the county does understand that, that not continuing with the lease with the school district, um, we know that that has a, I would go so far as to say, a catastrophic effect on your budget, on, on your cost.
Hey, yeah, I just have to comment, I mean, and this is just my, my personal opinion. I'm hearing you say that the county wants to do everything it can to alleviate the stress on the school board, but from my perspective, that's the threat of the county executive that's creating the stress. Um, so it, it seems to be a contradiction to me that, I mean, honestly, this is, to my mind, a warning as to why, uh, public-private, um, joint ventures can be a real problem, because if, uh, at any moment, the, the county can't get the bond that it wants, or the, in current legislative, it wants, it can just bite its hands of it and put this burden on the school district, on the taxpayers. You know, we're looking at however much the stadium is worth, and the $1.5 billion that's owed in five years, it's gonna have to be paid back, and a lot of stress for, uh, our school stakeholders. Um, I feel like it's the county executive's responsibility, if it's going to run a stadium on school land, to make sure that that gets through, regardless of what legislators happen to be in office.
Yeah, well, I think, I think the position that the county executive is trying to navigate is, he, although there is a very strong sense of commitment and, and, um, respect for what you as a board have to deal with in terms of your financing, um, the county executive also does have to consider the constituency at large in Duchess County, all these taxpayers, some of them who live in my land and Pine Plains and, and Red Hook and all those areas, who may not get to the stadium very often, their taxpayers too, and he certainly can't be in a position to simply take their tax dollars and give them to the board to make, to make the board whole at, at their expense. So I think, and rightfully so, I think his goal is to try to do right by the board and do right by the constituency at large, and by doing that, is, is the pursuit of this lease extension and a long-term lease. What we're looking for is a 20-year lease so that we can, we can sort of put this behind us, take the pendulum off of your head, and, and move forward with a, a level of confidence that you know that the county's gonna continue to make those payments for 20 years, we know that the renegades are gonna continue to pay us for 20 years, and the renegades know that they have a safe and updated facility, and this facility that the county's committed to maintaining for 20 years for their business model. So that's the long-term goal, and I think if, if you try to parse out individual pieces of it, you, you will start to see that, well, that one doesn't make sense if, but if you take it in the context of that larger goal of a 20-year lease, which is really what we're aiming for, take this risk away from everybody, that, that's the long-term goal of this.
So knowing the, so knowing the impacts of the school district and the children here, and knowing, um, that you, and, and as you're saying, you want voter representation, which happens through the legislature, um, if we approve this, this lease extension, will at least go to the floor for the, for the county legislators to vote on?
I don't think they have to vote on it, Anthony.
Yeah, I, I, and again, I, I'm not the expert on that, but I don't know with the legislature vote. I think if, I think if...
Well, I mean, if, if the executive doesn't want to sign, they will at least let, let the, let the, empower the legislator to vote on it. I mean, that's the only way you're gonna get voter representation, like you said.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know legally what the, what the mechanics or what the charter or what the county code calls for in terms of, uh, who, who would, who would be able to execute that lease if not for the county executive. I think the executive is the only authorized agent in the county to sign that agreement, um, and I don't know if he needs legislative approval. I don't know that he, I just don't know the answer whether they, he does or does not, but he is the agent that would sign the agreement, and, and he's not opposed to signing it. He would like to sign it under the context of a stadium that the renegades are committing to play in, and therefore sign a lease extension also.
So the, the, um, the, you know, what we read today in the Piscina Journal from County Legislator Edwards and what we're hearing here, um, from our legislator, is that they're asking for more information. Do you know, as the county executive is, um, is opposed to providing that information, that they say they need to, to be able to become a yes vote?
Uh, I know that the county executive received that request. Um, I haven't, I was copied on the email of the request itself, so I know, copied on the email was the county executive and the deputy county executive, and there might have been some others besides myself. Um, there was a piece of information that I was able to offer, um, but most of the information wasn't going to be generated through the Department of Public Works. It was gonna be generated either through the Law Department or the County Executive's Office or the, the, or the Budget Office. So I, I suspect fully that the County Executive's Office will gather all that information and present it to the legislature as they requested. Um, I, I don't know of a, I don't know of an instance where they have not done that. So I fully expect that the legislature will have all the answers to their questions. From my perspective, again, from the Department of Public Works, it was a very small piece of information that I've already forwarded up to the county executive.
Right, well, we thank you both for coming. We do appreciate it. We do have other business, and I do appreciate you guys coming down and answering questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is, is there any other public comment?
Hi. I didn't have anything prepared because I thought I would get information from the new business, but we flipped things, so now I have something to say. Um, first things first, I never thought I'd say, thank goodness Cuomo won the election. Um, of all the wolves and sheeps clothing, I think Marcus Molinaro's costume is the best. Um, I, uh, I see that this, you know, knowing, the little bit I know about this issue is that we are now, uh, what's landing in our lap is the consequence of a kind of rather not great land deal that was made in the good old days by the good old boys, and now we're trying to figure out what to do with that. It seems to me, as a taxpayer, and of course, someone who's really highly invested in the school district, that the county has put the school district in a really bad position. I understand that when the land was purchased, it wasn't a time in Beacon where developers were interested in our town, and that has changed. Um, I'm not saying let's sell this land today to a developer, because that's its own slippery slope for the school district, as we all know. Um, but I do think that, um, that there was two words that were brought up, I think, by you, Anthony, market value. I'm interested to know what the actual numbers are, um, for this land deal that we have. How many, I think 62 acres was mentioned. Um, what are we actually making on this in revenue or rent, in rental income from the county? And, um, you know, it was a sweet sales pitch for the 3-point-whatever million dollars, and, you know, I hear about crumbling stadium seats, and I think about the crumbling foundation in my kid's elementary school, and I hear about, you know, the, the, uh, the fan experience, and then I think about my kid's educational experience, and I just take my world's tiniest violin out for the renegades, and, you know, if it came down to the voters, and I'm not gonna obviously speak for every voter except myself, but I think the voters are gonna choose the Beacon City School District over the Hudson Valley Renegades. Just a guess. Um, I'm not saying we should get rid of the stadium, obviously, that's, it's not that simple, and we kind of need to keep it. Um, but I would like to know what the school district is gonna benefit from this. In the real world of land ownership, when you own a lot of land in a town that has value, you can create revenue from that. Um, from what I understand, the district isn't really benefiting at all from this rental agreement and hasn't in many years. Um, I'm not saying renege. I like the idea of market value. I don't know what's realistic, but I do think that, um, that needs to be looked at really closely as far as, um, what are we really gaining from this? Okay. The moral of the story is, is the county executive needs to do a better job. If he wants 3-point-whatever million dollars, he needs to present it in a way that's gonna make people want to give it to him. So do a better job at that, and then hopefully this bond will pass, and then we can get on with the business of educating the kids. Um, and then having said that, the best-case scenario, if that happens and Marcus ups his game and doesn't do another redo of his stabilization center, which, you know, gosh, I wonder why this bond would make people nervous given that dumpster fire, um, that then, the best-case scenario, the bond goes through, the lease gets renewed, we're back to business as usual, the best-case scenario is the Beacon City Schools are to continue to make almost no money on this rental agreement. And I just, as our board and as a taxpayer, so I'm at foot in both of those places, of someone who supports the district and someone who pays taxes, I'd like us to start making some money over the things we own, because I want to see my kids benefit from that. Don't really care about renegades, although, you know, baseball's great. But, um, Marcus was born on third base and thought he'd get a triple, I just had, throwing in one more baseball.
Good evening.
Evening.
First of all, my name is Dr. Paula C. Perez. Not a resident of Beacon, however, my husband and I have Faith Temple Church, which is literally right down the street on 22 North Cedar Street. I'm a recently retired elementary school principal. September 8th was my last day. I just retired as principal of a school in Kingston, New York. But as a result of my work for the years that I worked with children, I've realized the needs of a school, and listening to your conversation for the past several minutes about the stadium, we are here and our desire is to give to your community. So over the summer, I had an opportunity to meet with a few of the principals, and Principal Solowitz here, and one of the things that she requested when I asked, well, what can we do to help? She said that they needed umbrellas, because so many of the children, when the weather is bad, they won't come. And I can relate to that as a former principal of a Title I school. So we are donating to the school district about $600 worth of umbrellas, and we will be dropping them off at the high school. We picked up 50 umbrellas to be shared amongst the district. In addition, let me give you my card, so you can see where we're from. In addition, in the basket here, Principal Sesam talked about the turkey vouchers. We have also donated, um, turkey baskets, which include all of the fixings, stuffing, potatoes, yams, you name it, in addition to turkeys. And we had 150, of which 44 went to the Beacon City School District. And we just want you to know that we are here, we want to support the district and the great work that you're doing with our families and our children. And if there's any other way that we can be of assistance, we would love for you to reach out to us. So thank you again for your work, your volunteers, and you couldn't pay me enough to do what you do. So thank you for all you did.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? I was gonna say, seeing none and just leave.
Yeah, I'm sure you know. It's lovely to see all of you, beautiful people. Um, my name is Ken Yagethen, I'm a Beacon City School taxpayer. Um, just here on behalf of the Southern Duchess Coalition, I believe that, um, there is a meeting scheduled tomorrow, but, um, they are having a mass choir concert on, on Saturday, December 1st, and it's in support of the January 21st Martin Luther King event. Um, this event is historical here. Um, the community comes out and, um, really has a good time. Breakfast is provided, um, for free. There's a march, there's an afternoon event, and, um, they do a really good job in just, um, educating the community and trying to bring the community together through this event. Um, there's also a essay writing contest, and the goal this year is to really get all of the schools involved, um, with an emphasis on getting the high school involved. So we don't have a lot of high school participation, and, um, they, they work really hard on the theme and the concept to try to make sure that it is enticing to the high school students. So the goal is to really ask and encourage, um, those teachers, administrators, parents at home. Um, you two are invited to actually, um, participate in the essay writing contest. Um, this is all free, so everyone who participates is donating their time, um, to ensure that the community is educated and going together on issues about, um, Dr. Martin Luther King. So I do have, um, flyers for all of the schools. I'm just gonna give them to you, Dr. Orlando, because I haven't cashed anything in a long time, and I'm just gonna load them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
So move.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, carry 90. What was that, Craig? All right. In reviewing the agenda, I did not know any corrections that need to be addressed. Did anybody have any, any agendas that they need reviewed? Seeing none, we're gonna go to new business, and that is the discussion of the MOU with Duchess County in regards to the stadium. Um, I think we had pretty lengthy conversation at, uh, public comment. Does anybody have anything else that they would like to discuss in regards to MOU?
Yeah, just a comment, just, I hope this gives the pressure off and that the county can solve this couple.
Might at least give us a year to, to, you know, come up with what plans, you know, we would have to do in order to protect the... keeps the hopes of the field of dreams alive out there. And I must say, though, however, to reiterate the comments that have been made before, I don't like being pushed close to the clock. This is not one of those things where it's supposed to be sudden death overtime, if you may accept a different sports analogy. But I'm going to keep it alive. Another concern I have is that this board has not yet done any serious discussion about the sixty-four acres that we own up there, including what to do with any of the vacant land. So we don't need to skip that just because somebody else has an emergency. You know, it's the old saying, "Your lack of planning is not my emergency." So the specific concern I have is this proposal refers to potential lease or sale of the empty twenty-one acres to the north of the stadium. We've never talked about that, except that these guys brought it up for us. So we can thank them for bringing it to mind, but we have to resolve, are we prepared to let loose of it, or do we have some other uses for it? One of them could be putting a solar farm up there that would offset our electric costs. The city of Beacon recently completed such a project, and they expect to save a hundred thousand dollars a year. There may be other options, too, that would enable us to make some kind of return on the investment that we made many fifty years ago or so. Right now, it's just sitting there empty. So it's really an underutilized asset that we have to figure out what we want to do with it. So that's my comments.
Ken?
Well, can we see if anybody else had comments?
Sure.
Does anybody else have any other comments?
My only comment is that I'll vote for the MOU to give the county the opportunity to do the right thing. I feel like, I think it's on them to do the right thing for the school district. My comment.
All right. Anthony?
Can we, I mean, with the president's term motion to strike, and potentially an additional plus of minus twenty-one acres of vacant land owned by the district contiguous to the stadium, and it wouldn't change the approval of the MOU?
I don't know if it would or wouldn't. I know that our attorney has been working with the county attorney on the MOU. That's why I was shocked when the vote was no, because we, our attorney has been working with their attorney since September on creating an MOU for us to extend the year lease. So I think the extension is only for a year. That I wouldn't, I'm not in favor of adjusting the wording when it's been agreed by their attorney and our attorney, because I don't know how it will go. To be honest with you, I don't know how much I trust the county legislators to then say, go back and forth as to, "Hey, this is what you, was given to you." I'm sure it was, just like our attorney shared it with us. I'm hoping that their attorney shared it with them, too, to that.
Well, so you're understanding that, I mean, if leaving it in the, and leaving it in the MOU, it doesn't relinquish our rights as owners, so we would, I don't imagine have a plan prior to...
No, I understand that. I just, first of all, the MOU doesn't actually mention the vacant land at all, so I don't think it would change. If, I'm only asking to leave it out of the resolution, out of the MOU.
I believe it does specifically mention that. If you look at the first page and the second paragraph, "For reasons set forth herein, the parties wish to extend this lease for a minimum period of one year or until the parties have either negotiated a new lease or the sale of the premises described in the lease," that's the stadium land, "and/or any other property owned by the district that is contiguous to the premises described in the lease," that's the north twenty-one.
I'm sorry, missed that. Okay.
Just because it's in there doesn't mean we have to agree upon it. It's a thing of the lease, and that it would be further discussed.
Yeah, just sometimes it's harder to take backs, you have to, you put something on the table.
Well, it's not a take back. I mean, it's just all, you know, it's just saying it's, you know, could potentially be included in negotiations, but we, it says we have to agree with it, or it's contingent possible.
I think it's hard for the district to make any, form any opinions with limited information that we have. We haven't vetted anything of a lease or sale of the property of subdivision or anything else with the land. We've been consumed with developing an MOU to extend it under the assumption that the county was going to then work out with our attorney something with our input as to a long-term lease or sale of the land. But this was the MOU for, to extend it for a year. So I don't think it binds us to anything. I think it's going on. This is what's been discussed with our attorneys and the county attorney, and that's what's in front of us.
And I think, my understanding, in reading this again, the, this is coming under the potential acquisition of the district's property, and then, and it looks like in consideration of that acquisition, they would also be interested in twenty-one, the twenty-one acres of land contiguous to the stadium. So I think that that is mostly in their, if there's a move to purchase.
I mean, they could inquire about anything. They may not inquire when they find out a price for asking for it, right?
No, I, no, I understand that, but by adopting the resolution, we're actually offering, I think we're kind of offering it to them as a potential.
I think we're opening up the conversation.
Right, I mean, I think that the one thing that we would like right now is to not be the thing in their way, to move forward and find out what they're doing, and there's plenty of things that they have in their own way. But I feel good that as the district, we're actually sort of doing our part to help them move things forward, so that we can understand where we are with things. But this does not bind us to guarantee a sale or, you know, any acquisition. Is that how you...
No, I understand that. I'm not saying it guarantees it. What I do know is, is, you know, the game of telephone, you know, where it's like, "Oh, the board's interested in selling us the other twenty-one acres," because they passed the resolution. It's like, "No, no, no, we weren't really. We just were just trying to make sure we get the pressure off this situation."
Well, I think, given that, given how this process has gone, I think we'll approach all future discussions with extreme caution, because I think it was our understanding for quite some time that we've been acting in good faith. And in the development of this memorandum, I have the understanding we were acting in good faith, and did not expect to find ourselves in a position of having to have a game of bruntsmanship thrown into our, you know, meeting. So I think that while maybe this is something that could slip through the cracks on a, at a different period in time, I do not imagine that is how we will proceed with this property going forward, because I don't think we can really take anything for granted. I see this language as potentially, as just something that they would consider and that we would consider, and also it seems to be directly related to the sale, and I thought that that had something to do with parking, something that, one of the many things that we have all been reading about this project for the past couple of months. I understand your caution. I share it overall. As far as this deal goes, I do not share it. As far as this MOU, I think that it's in our best interest to push the people who have entered into this deal and who need to work out the details, with reference to the Renegades and the stadium, in a position where they can do that before they put us in a financially, you know, dangerous position.
I'll be satisfied if the minutes will show that the board is not making a decision to let twenty-one Beacon acres of land.
Already.
It says potential acquisition, potentially an additional, so...
All right. Here another discussion. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the student, student or school presentations.
Don't we need a motion to accept the resolution?
It's later on.
Later on. Oh, I'm sorry.
I want to have the discussion, so people can ponder it until that time.
Sorry, I lost my place.
Any parent groups? Seeing none, we're going to go to... Got to be all quicker, Kenya.
He always says that. So rude.
Let's go.
This is, honey, this has me so much. It's like, it's still...
I'm glad you have that perception.
So I'm just coming on behalf of the Beacon High School VTESO. We just want to say thank you to all of the parents that donated to help support the lunch and breakfast for the teachers during the parent conference. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other parent groups? Seeing none, superintendent's report.
Thanks, Anthony. Just want to start by thanking John Candello, Crystal Sesams, and Cassandra Orser for giving three really great presentations about their leadership this year and where they're trying to take their department or schools. And we're, like I mentioned earlier, we're going to continue that at our next meeting with Robout, Beacon High School, and the Athletic and PE Department. And at, also at the next board meeting, we will start laying out the budget calendar, and so we'll have a draft for the board to look at and give feedback, both in terms of what's on the calendar and also the process for how we want to develop the budget this year. So we'd like, we'd like to have that on the agenda to discuss. And, excuse me, the other thing that we'll have ready for the board is also the board goals that you adopted a few meetings ago. We will have our measurables and actions completed, or at least draft fashion. Most of them represent things that we're already doing. Some are some new efforts, so we'll have it ready for the board to look at on December tenth as well. I'm using the language of measurables and actions, because that's the language that is coming out of our strategic planning. Just an update on strategic planning. We, it is moving along. We had over two hundred people participate in the online thought exchange. We will have another thought exchange later in this process. We'll be getting more specific with the community about programs that they want to see in the school district. But we had a very highly engaged two-hundred-plus people, over two hundred thoughts, and I think, you know, things were rated over six thousand times, and so there was a nice level of engagement in that. Our committee was supposed to meet on Friday for a whole-day retreat, and the weather had different thinking about that, so we're rescheduling that for the Tuesday after Thanksgiving break. So we felt lucky to be able to get our consultant. He's kind of busy for the next month or so, but so the timeline is still on track for the strategic planning. And lastly, I wanted to give the board an update on the mold remediation that's been happening in the district since the beginning of the school year. Actually, just, we started a few days before the school year began. This is just a summary. At Beacon High School, we worked with Surf Pro to remediate thirteen classrooms, two teacher prep rooms, about seven storage areas, about four practice areas. Going back to those classrooms, they were primarily in the science, art, and music areas of the high school on the first floor. And then a large project was remediating the theater, which is obviously done, because you see things happening in the theater tonight and for the past few weeks. And then our last, our last effort is actually happening over Thanksgiving break. Surf Pro's coming back. The air quality was never such that we needed to close the library, but we did notice some trouble spots in the library. They have a very high ceiling, like we have in the theater. So Surf Pro's coming back to do cleaning of the library, including cleaning the ceiling, cleaning some of the furniture, and also looking at some of the books, especially some of the older books, and so we'll be working with staff here to replace those. The other school that we looked at was Forestal, and Forestal, we had to do remediation. This was, again, back to the Beacon school year, seven classrooms. Those seven classrooms were in the lower level of the building. A lot of those classrooms are kind of, if you've ever been in Forestal, it's not quite a basement, but it's sort of almost like, sort of feels like it's half underground. And so we think that, you know, the really unprecedented levels of moisture and humidity this summer and early fall contributed to things developing in the classrooms at Forestal. Those same conditions caused the issues to happen at the high school, along with the chiller, that that wasn't really up to the task. So that's one of the things that we're working with the Facilities Committee of the Board moving forward, and Anthony D'Amato, our Facilities Director, is working very closely with this to look at solutions to fixing the chiller at the high school. I want to make the board aware of how much we've been spending. We have been giving you, the Facilities Committee, some updates on this, but we wanted to share this with the whole board. The test, the total cost for this mold remediation in both high school and Forestal over late summer up until now is, has been six hundred and forty thousand dollars. The reason that we're sharing this with the board is just so we're aware of things as we head into budget season, so we're aware of the cost of an issue like this, and just the importance, really, of the upkeep that we provide for all our buildings. The Surf Pro work was the bulk of that money. It was about five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The theater proved to be very time-consuming and expensive. It was, it was kind of a tricky place, because all the seats in the theater have the cloth fabric on them, which, which each sing, every single seat needed to be cleaned twice, basically. And so it was a very time-consuming process. The rest of the funds went to testing. We used an outside state-approved testing agency, and they were testing basically all throughout the high school and Forestal throughout this entire process, not just when we were doing the cleaning. And then, and then about thirty thousand dollars went to buying dehumidifiers and air filters for the affected classrooms. I think, you know, one of the things about being a school administrator at any level is that there's always unexpected things. This was obviously something that was, that was unexpected. I want to thank the board and the community for their support through this process. It certainly was a challenge, and I think staff met the challenge at every level. I think, you know, communication is one of those things that you could always do better, but I think we communicated well throughout this process with both the community and the staff members. Community, the communication was through updates through our email blast and also on our website. And with staff, they also received those, but with a lot of either faculty meetings or face-to-face meetings with affected individual teachers of departments. So this is just, you know, I usually like to focus on all the positive stuff during the superintendent report, and it's certainly, in some ways, this is a positive, because we were able to get through it. We were able to get all of these learning spaces back to really good condition. The theater, if you have a chance to go, the Beacon Players is on December seventh, eighth and ninth for a chorus line, and you'll see a theater that actually feels brand-new. So it was nice to be able to do this. How we paid for this? We had some unrestricted fund balance very early in this process, that we moved to create a new reserve called an insurance reserve. That was a board action a few months ago that is paying for the bulk of this. We had, that reserve was up to five hundred thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken, so we obviously had to go over that a bit, and so we're looking at some other reserves to take funds from. So I wanted to share, we've been really discussing in depth in our Facilities Committee meetings, but I thought it would make sense to do in public at one of these full board meetings, so you knew the extent of the cost. Again, thanks to the board for your support in kind of working through this. It was complicated and challenging, and a lot of staff members really stepped up. Anthony D'Amato obviously had tireless efforts working on this. And so just thanks to all involved for getting through it, and with that, that ends my superintendent report.
All right. So next item on the agenda is unfinished business. So we submitted a letter to Terrence Cho from Empire State Development. I actually had a phone conference with Terrence Cho and Megan Taylor today to advise us. They wouldn't say whether they would accept the Beacon City School District or a member on the committee until that phone conversation happened. I had that phone conversation today. They're happy to extend the, to extend an offer for a board member to be part of that committee. However, they made it clear that it's a mobile advisory group only. They will not be, that committee will not, will review the proposals and highlights, but they won't know who submitted the proposal, and that they're still the deciding factor on the final RFP. So it's an advisory... However, they made it clear that it's a mobile advisory group only. They will not be, that committee will not, will review the proposals and highlights, but they won't know who submitted the proposal, and that they're still the deciding factor on the final RFP. So it's an advisory committee, and it's really just that there's no decision-making pieces. So the other questions that I asked, I said, who else was on the committee? They asked me not to share that. They said it's a local advisory group, but they didn't want me to share names. I don't know why. That was one of the questions I asked, is could I share names? They said no. I also asked when they meet. They said they meet, they give about three to four weeks' notice before they meet. They meet during the day, and it's approximately one hour to one and a half hours each meeting. So as of now, we have to decide who would like to be part of that advisory council. I mean, Anthony, you brought it up.
I'm interested, but I mean, if there's another board member that is also interested to have more time.
Would that timing be okay for you, can make a day meeting when, if you have the advance notice?
I won't know. I have certain, some days that are blocked off. Even if they gave me three weeks' notice, I won't be able to move because I'm traveling back and forth from DC to New York.
Can we have a sub, like if any?
Share it somehow if it's a conflict.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I mean, we got Anthony as a first person, and then if there's somebody who you can, if you want to put it to people, if there's one of us can show me.
I do have to submit names to them.
I would say Anthony, and then, I mean Craig, do you have availability to go to the board during the day?
I could fill in if he's not available.
And how does the board want to, when I review these things, how does the board want to, want me to weigh in on it? I mean, do I share information in executive session, or how does that work?
I think you could share with the whole board in public. Unless they say it's like, I asked him if I could share the members of the committee because he discussed it with me, but they followed up and emailed to me saying, no, please don't.
I think they don't want people to be locked in.
I guess so, I don't know. They're going to know who our representation is, so. I mean, obviously keeping, we could come up with parameters at maybe a future board meeting. They're not going to, they said they'll give three to four weeks' notice before. I know that they had a visit today for the RFP, for their tour in the land. So we could come up with something that we don't want, maybe the dues.
Sure, okay.
All right? Everybody good?
Thank you.
Committee reports. Noah, Ben Chupar over there, my man.
So the survey, Anil and I have been talking about, has finally started. Results are coming in. We haven't really taken a look at them because also National Arts Society has been doing Project Hope, which is the food can fundraiser. So it's starting today. We were here. We didn't get home early. We stayed, we had to load up minivans and cars and drop off all the cans that the QWOL will be back there tomorrow. Some of us are getting out of school to go help load the food pantries up with the cans. So that's going on, and we're going to be looking at the results. When we come back from break, the students will be taking it in their lunch period if they have them. Mississauga is planning on putting laptop carts out in lunchrooms, so they'll be given the opportunity to take that survey. And lunch, and the survey pretty much consists of the issues we brought up a couple of meetings ago. What like this they would like to see, we put a few of those business executives on there to see if they sparked any interest, and just a wide variety of what they would like to see, how we did in our first survey, just hoping to get a little more feedback and response to them. And we should have those by the December 10th meeting. So that's all my comments, and hopefully everyone has a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Craig?
That's very good. I don't have too much to say right now, except that I loved the comment earlier on the presentations that we had from our three presenters at the workshop. Comment about alphabet soup. There's a lot of that in education, and in the interest of transparency and simply understanding what the heck people are talking about, it's a good idea to decode your abbreviations. People in education just flip them off of each other because they don't want to say the whole thing. They already know what that is, but the general public often does not. And sometimes this interferes with the ability of other stakeholders, parents, students, taxpayers, to understand what it is. So if we live in a world full of acronyms, I would encourage people to try to decode them as soon as possible for the sake of understanding. So that's my thoughts for the night.
Did you think they did it, or did you? I thought they did a good job of that.
They did pretty well.
Yeah, so I just wanted to mention that this morning, we gathered at Common Ground Farm to pack the backpacks for the Thanksgiving program that was mentioned earlier. And I wanted to thank all the parent volunteers who helped with that, and also United Way and Gipsy Journal for providing that grant and Common Ground Farm. And specifically, I wanted to thank several linemen who has really worked tirelessly to make sure that we got the grant and that everything was coordinated. And all together, through all this teamwork, we were able to provide Thanksgiving meals to 25 families. And I really, kids getting proper nutrition even when they're not in school is near and dear to my heart. So I was really happy about that. The only other thing I want to mention is I wasn't at the last wellness committee meeting, unfortunately, but Cecilia was nice enough to share some information with me. And I know that we are looking for more members for the committee, and we are meeting the first Wednesday of the month, 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the community room in Beacon High School. We do have childcare provided, so that's really helpful. And I'm hoping that we can get some new members. This first meeting that we had, we had discussions from John Giammetta and also Ms. Pagano talking about professional development from the farm-to-table menu. So there's a lot of good stuff going on. There were other things. I'm not going to read it all now since I wasn't there and I can't really speak to it, but I know there's a lot of good stuff happening, and I hope that we get some more members coming in.
Thank you. James?
Hi. So first I want to say, a few weeks ago, I attended a safety meeting, a safety committee meeting. I can't discuss publicly what we were talking about, this is emergency protocols, which need to be kept secure. But I can say that it was a real treat to witness our security director firsthand, coordinating with law enforcement or security officers. It was very reassuring to see how a district-wide manager of our security protocol is really working. And it was really great. We have a policy committee meeting coming up. Sorry, just have that date in front of me, and I just. 28th, is that right? Yes, that's right. 28th. At 8:15, we're going to be, we're going through our crosswalks, bringing up, we're going to go to the 5000s. Policies we'll be looking at is eligibility for co-curricular, extracurricular, student organizations, student fundraising activities, and finishing up the special education. And that's all I have. Oh, I wanted to thank Dr. Perez for her donation of the umbrellas. It's been a very rainy, rainy season. I'm sure our students will appreciate that. So thank you again for that. I feel like we belabored the stadium issue plenty. I just want to reiterate my frustration that I feel like the administration is putting us in this situation, playing chicken with their legislative and really putting our students in the middle, really. Really, that's what's being dangled. As we move forward, I hope the administration does approve the MOU. It would be unfortunate if we weren't to become owners of a stadium. But I was looking at a quote that I saw Marcus Malnaro said at one point. He said, "Even if the county wanted to sell the stadium, there aren't buyers for a ballpark that sits on rented land." Believe me, I've tried. Perhaps we would have better luck. So if it is going to be a threat that we might end up owning a stadium, we might find a buyer that gives us something better. That's my last comment on that.
I don't have a committee report, but I'd like to thank the district for having the foresight of having a half-day last week on Thursday because I've been reading these horror stories about kids stuck on buses in New York State and in the area until 11:00 p.m. So thanks for having the half-day on Thursday.
You know, they don't get praise for that enough. That's like the biggest complaint they get, I think. So that is well noted. Take that in that. There's going to be a lot more close calls.
Snow showers tonight? No accumulation. Expected.
Okay, for the facility operations committee, I'll just add a little bit what Dr. Landau had said about the mold remediation. We have been talking about, you know, what are we going to do in the future to prevent this from recurring? You know, throughout this, we have, you know, we purchased a number of dehumidifiers and a protocol going for managing that, I think, at the elementary schools. At the high school, you know, we have an air conditioning system, so you wouldn't really think you would have a problem with humidity. So there is, Anthony D'Amato is going through with a company to look at. What are the, how is the system set up? What are the potential, was there potential issues that caused the problem with our current system? Is it not controlling properly? Is there modifications we might need in order to make it more efficient? Because if you really look at the dynamics, not to get to the engineering of it all, but things can happen. There is a percentage of makeup air that has to come into this school, so if it's continually making up 10% of humidified air, you continually have to remove humidity. And then if you, then if your chillers, if you're chilling a room and your cooling section is below the dew point, it's taking out moisture. But then if the room gets too cold, it actually shuts the chiller off, so it doesn't get too cold. So now you're not removing the humidity on your coils anymore. So some systems have a reheat section so that you actually cool it, remove the moisture, and then heat it back up to the room temperature so it's not too cool. You know, there could be flow velocity problems where the air coming across the chiller is too fast and just keeps the air, the moisture untrained. So there's a lot of potentials. So our director of facilities is, as a company, that's really looking at a comprehensive view to give us some recommendations. Some, you know, if there's modifications, it may be very expensive. If it's tweaking, adjusting, it may not be so. But one thing I wanted to bring up here is that if the recommendations are expensive, we really want to be able to have a third-party or, you know, a third-party review to come in so we're not just saying, okay, here's a resolution, we're going to go with what you say. Want somebody else to take a look at that. So that'll probably, you know, we'll probably need a contract to do that, but I want to bring it up here, just so we have all the information we can possibly have in order to make the best decision to, you know, again, prevent this from happening again. So those are, you know, some of the discussions we're having. The other thing is our next one is the 12th of December at 7:00 p.m. So that's it.
Thank you. Anthony?
Good evening. So I'm still working on trying to find a date for the December diversity meeting. Looking at dates, second week or the third week of December. And I'll poll the members when I just check on their availability. So that's all I can.
Okay, thank you. Kristen?
I don't have any committee reports. I covered everything that they would have said about facilities. I'm really glad that Dr. Landau gave the sort of, you know, didn't shy away from the bad news first because, you know, this is germane to our discussion, you know, related to things, you know, outside of our control. This would be another thing that's outside of our control. One of the things that, you know, from being on the board a little bit is that you recognize that you really, you hope for the best, but you do sort of have to plan for the worst and then find a way to deal with it the best way possible. This was totally unexpected, and I'm sure not what he wanted to be working on shortly before the school year. But I'm really grateful to all of the leadership and staff for how well they've addressed this head-on, and will get through it financially. I just, I know we did take up a lot of time with the stadium, but I just want to say that I really appreciated the presentations that we heard tonight. I thought that they were, you know, that they sort of fed into like a bigger picture that we've been trying to go for, which is not just programs, but like the entire student experience. And that includes, you know, are they, do they have food? Are they learning, is respectful communication being modeled for them? And are they developing that skill among one another? I really appreciated that, you know, when Mississauga was approached about how community organization could support the school and students, that a simple answer like umbrellas, you know, is a really powerful one because it's something that, you know, no matter, no matter how much we invest in facilities and programs, nothing works unless these students actually reach the buildings. And so if it's a small, sort of low-tax solution, and it can really pay dividends and create a deeper connection and understanding, so what are some of the barriers? And I don't think it's any surprise that a principal heard that and understood immediately. I think we've seen an evolution in these presentations over the last couple of years. There's not just information, we're seeing goals, programs, and they're developing into a more focused vision. And I credit that to leadership. And the thing that I also thought was really nice is while there is cohesion and we see all these things fitting together, I also think it's how individual leadership styles came through is, you know, it's how these building leaders are making these goals their own. And that was really rewarding to see because I'm sure it's rewarding for them to work in that type of setting, too. Let more people sort of execute in the way that they see works best will hopefully keep them satisfied. And I hope everyone has a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
I also don't have any committee reports. Our curriculum committee meeting is tomorrow, 2:30? And the next Extracurricular School Board Association meeting is December 6th. I sent an email to everyone about that board retreat that would be part of our strategic planning process in January, so please get back to me as soon as you can, so I can book that date with Jonathan Costa. I think it'll be really helpful to just sort of bring everyone in on what we have learned. And I was going to say the same thing about presentations. I think it's the first time that I've heard the word kindness used so many times during a principal's presentation, and that meant a lot to me, and also teams and just, I think, the kind of, some of the things we've been talking about in terms of changing the culture, you can start to, you can start to hear that really embedded in how the leadership is bringing it to their, to everyone else. And I'm sure the kids are absorbing that as well.
You sure?
Yeah.
All right, I have no comments. All right, moving to approve 12.01. I need a motion to approve 12.01.
Motion to approve 12.01 Resolution 111918.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried 9-0. That was the MOU for the stadium. I need a motion, hold on. Moving on to the consent agenda. Can you read this for me?
The consent, the use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue.
Thank you. Any member wish to pull anything from the consent agenda? 13.06. Hearing no other. I need a motion to approve 13.01, 13.09 minus 13.06. Second? Is there a second? Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried 9-0. I would just like to thank Mr. Kelly from AON. Staying out, we just approved the contract for the rest of the year, correct?
Yes, that's right. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Hung in there. I need a motion to approve 13.06.
Motion to approve 13.06, approve claims auditors' reports.
Is there a second? Comments or questions?
Yeah, I have two questions on the 1113 2018 file.
Yeah, I have two questions on the 11-13-2018 file. So first, on page one, I just want to recognize the, you know, the SERF, you can see $530,000 for SERF Pro. Just, you know, when you see that number, it's, when you see it, it's really big, and just to make sure people, you know, clearly know that that's, you know, part of the mold remediation, so that's a big deal. The other, the second question I have was on the note on the bottom, maybe some of my learnings. Check for 29998, invoice 180590. It says for $354.70, yet up in the actual check row is $3,386.70.
So the notes, when the internal claims auditor was reviewing, it did not find the invoice, so it must have been on the stub part of the check. So he wrote the note, and then we gave it back to the accounts payable clerk, who submitted it, and resubmitted it back to the internal claims auditor.
But is the, so is the PO for the $3,316 over $354.70?
The three, the PO is prob, the check is probably for more, it's usually for more than one invoice, but they could not find the invoice for $354.70, so that's included in the $3,000.
Oh, it's included. All right, thank you.
I also want to mention that we are tracking all of the mold remediation costs in a separate budget code, so when we report at the end of the year, you'll see it in total, so it'll show out differently in case there's questions.
All right. Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the, I don't really have a comment on the 13.06, but I just wanted to say thank you to 13.07, because it's money for the biology class, so I forgot to.
You beat me to it. I was going to say with thanks at the end.
Yeah. I was so expecting that, so that's why I wanted to stay thunder.
It's okay, you could do it. I know the hard time speaking to you, Anthony, so. Any other comments about 13.06? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried 9.9-0. I just do have a question for clarity. When I read the consent agenda, did I say 13.01 through 13.12?
Hmm.
Part of me thinks I said 13.1 through 13.09, so I'm a little nervous that I didn't say
Do you want to do it again?
13.1.
Yeah, so if you want a motion for 13-10 to 13-12, I'll make it.
All right. Anthony? I'm just worried that I didn't do it. 13-12.
Yeah, first it's second.
All those in, is there a second?
Second.
Anthony. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried 9-0. Thank you. I just don't, any motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried 9-0.
I don't think that's it.